Good evening. This, the 29th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all your cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mr. Andy McNeely of Front Porch Christian Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a time of prayer. Oh God, we acknowledge your presence in this place tonight. We take pause to thank you for the new life that you offered each one of us through the saving grace of your Son, Jesus Christ, who gave up heaven for a time to be present among us here on earth. We pray, Lord God, that we, as citizens of this great city, would be present to our neighbors in tangible everyday ways, that we would, as Jesus asked us to, love our neighbors as we love ourselves, checking in on our elderly and hurting neighbors, seeking new perspectives from those who have different experiences from us, and encouraging our youth. God, you have shared the abundance of your kingdom with us in the beautiful city of Baltimore. We thank you for the unique cultures that have come together to form our Baltimore. We thank you for the resources that you've given us to work with, and we commit to caring for this city with everything that we have. We pray, Lord God, that these honest and able leaders in our city council will work together to increase the abundance for every citizen of our city. Oh God, we pray for your peace, the peace which passes all understanding over this incredible city, Baltimore. You are the Creator of love, mercy, and peace, so we pray that you would give these men and women the wisdom needed to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail. We pray for our youth, who are so often looked down upon or forgotten, give us the foresight to raise up healthy, caring children in Baltimore City who will love their neighbors as we have modeled for them. God, we invite you to remain with us this evening and to make your presence known by the way that we speak to one another peacefully and by the way we unite for the purpose of caring for our great city of Baltimore. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Good evening. We welcome Ms. Jennifer Bodenseek of Junior Achievement of Central Maryland as our showcase for this evening. Please greet her with a welcome.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'm gonna have some slide cards tonight. I thought I would help and give you some stats and showcase what we're doing for Baltimore City youth. Junior Achievement has been working with Baltimore City youth for over 60 years, and what I can share with you is we only get bigger and better with time. What I want to share is that we really believe that kids really learn best by relevant, authentic, and experiential learning, and we do that around financial education, work readiness, and entrepreneurship. We want kids to learn firsthand what it's like to connect classroom learning to the real world early in their K-12 education. We also know Junior Achievement works. J alum report that they start businesses two and a half times more than their peers. They earn 20% more than their peers. And a J alum that lived as youth in low-income communities report that 60% of them moved, social mobility moved, from middle to high-income as adults. In 2015, we entered a partnership with Baltimore City Public Schools to expand. It wasn't just for some kids. How did we make our programs available to all? How did we show kids, early on, what it meant to be in the workplace, to explore entrepreneurship, to understand financial capability? I'm happy to report, in three short years, that program and being able to expand our services, today we reach over 11,000 Baltimore City young people, K to 12, every year. 11,000, and we can do more. We don't do this alone. We have 500 community and business volunteers every year that work with Baltimore City students. In addition, this is $500,000 that Junior Achievement invests directly into programs every single year in Baltimore City Public Schools alone. We also believe that it happens outside of the schoolhouse, and we work with multiple after-school partners. This year, we opened an entrepreneurship in the UA House in collaboration with Living Classrooms. We expanded financial capability in West Baltimore with the Cash Campaign of Maryland. Thank you to T. Rowe Price Foundation. We were expanding that work. And in 2019, we plan to go bigger. We plan to open up a new workforce and innovation center for youth right here in Baltimore City. We are down to two sites, 40,000 square feet of immersive, interactive space for young people, right here in Baltimore. In addition, they'll have a career center, they'll have an entrepreneurship center, a place where they can try on what real world's all about, where they can get a paycheck, they can see jobs, they can see that in action. That will allow us to reach 30,000 Baltimore City youth every single year, both in school and after-school. And last but not least, I know you're ready for me to wrap up. We go back to three. That will help us increase investments into Baltimore City to be upwards of $3 million a year in workforce entrepreneurship programs for youth. So how can you help? Help us advocate for the new center, come out and visit our current center. We were moving our headquarters from Baltimore County to Baltimore City, and we need your help. So, thank you for allowing me the time. You have a packet of information, and I hope you will contact us to find out more.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you for the great work that you do. It is the Council, custom generalized, invocation, ask for motion, generalize prayer. Most by Councilman Burnett, second by Councilman Costello. All in favor, generalize the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have, the motion is adopted. On the members' desks is a letter regarding the appointment of Mr. Irvin Bishop, who's standing here now, as reading clerk of the city council. Do I have a motion to approve this appointment? Moved by Councilman Middleton, second by Councilman Henry. All in favor, adopt the council appointment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the appointment is confirmed. Approval of the journal. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from February 26th, city council meeting, is on council members' desks.
The motion approved the journal. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Scott. All in favor, adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Somebody said pass? Okay. The motion is carried, the journal is adopted. Generalize the mayor state of the city address. I recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to generalize the state of the city address given by Mayor Katherine Pew at the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole on March 12th, 2018.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All in favor, generalize the state of the city address given by Mayor Katherine Pew at the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole on March 12th, 2018. Say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the address will be generalized. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda, executive nominations.
EA 18-0132, Aaron Bryan, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 6.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0133, James French, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 6.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0134, Larry Gibson, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0135, Thomas LaBelle, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 11.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0136, Matthew Mosca, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0137, Elizabeth Nix, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 9.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0138, Laura Penza, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 4.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0139, Aneth Rannan, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 5.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0140, Monica Rhodes, Member Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 1.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 18-0195, Pace Loan Program Corrective. For the purpose of clarifying the description of priorities to which surcharge payments received under the Pace Loan Program must be credited, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0196, Environmental Citations Default Penalty. For the purpose of modifying the procedures for maximum amounts of the default penalty imposed under an environmental citation on a person cited who neither pays the citations prescribed, prepayable, find, or requests a hearing on the violation cited, or who, having requested a hearing, fails to appear at the designated hearing, correcting, clarifying, conforming related language, and generally related to the enforcement of environmental citations, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0197, Sale of Property, 1215 West Lafayette Avenue, Block 0090, portion of Lot 011A. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all its interest in a certain parcel of now known as 1215 West Lafayette Avenue, Block 0090, portion of Lot 011A, no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0198, City Streets Closing Demora Avenue and Certain Alleyies Line Between West Garrison Avenue, Park Heights Avenue, Woodland Avenue, and Exchmere Avenue. For the purpose of condemning and closing Demora Avenue and Certain Alleyies of varying lists line between West Garrison Avenue, Park Heights Avenue, Woodland Avenue, and Exchmere Avenue as shown on Plaid 332-A-29A, and the Office of Department of Transportation, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0199, Charter Amendment Office of the Inspector General. For the purpose of creating an independent office of the Inspector General headed by an Inspector General, establishing the process for appointing and terminating the Inspector General, establishing the powers and duties of the Office of the Inspector General, appointing the Inspector General to serve as the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics, granting the Inspector General the authority to cancel or suspend certain contracts with the concurrence of the city's solicitor, setting a minimum guarantee funding level for the Office of the Inspector General, setting a minimum guarantees compensation level for the Inspector General, granting the Inspector General the power to issue subpoenas, requiring the Office of the Inspector General to issue an annual public report, requiring city employees and officials to forward certain types of complaints to the Office of the Inspector General, requiring the Office of the Inspector General to keep the identities of complainants confidential to the extent allowed by law, establishing procedures to transition the existing office of the Inspector General and the Law Department into the newly created independent office of the Inspector General, generally relating to the Office of the Inspector General, and submitting this amendment to the qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection, sponsors Dorsey, Burnett, Slyfer, Henry, Snead, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, and I'm sorry for making you read that bill title, Mr. Bishop. I started working on this, writing of this bill in the spring, early summer of 2017, and took a lot of time to revise this in consultation with a number of folks, including those who wrote the original executive order that establishes the Inspector General's office as it is presently, who were very helpful in helping to understand the weaknesses of it as it is. Right now, as an inspector general office, this could just go away at the wave of a hand. Our ability to hold city employees accountable to the high standards that we should be able to, for strong city processes, for accountability, for transparency, and for acting in a forthright manner, could simply go away and is not rooted in best practices established by the National Association of Inspectors General. This bill sets up a process for appointing and removing and overseeing on an annual basis the operations of the Inspector General's office, ensures that the office will have the funding level that it needs to not have to fear its ability to be affected by way of defunding in the annual ordinance of estimates, which is an inherently political process, and, you know, inspector general's office, really in order to be effective and independent, it cannot operate in fear of being defunded. This requires that the office set certain standards of excellence for who works in it, and sets a term for the inspector general, so that they're not simply serving at the pleasure of the mayor or any one or two people. So I thank my colleagues for supporting this as cosponsors, and in principle, I think it's really important at this time when it's really hard to trust what goes on in the media, for people to really be confident that there is an agency in city government that is holding city government accountable. So I'm really thankful for the support.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0200, City Property Renaming Radaki Park to Ralph Sears Fields at Radaki Park. For the purpose of changing the name of Radaki Park located at 5602 Radaki Avenue to Ralph Sears Fields at Radaki Park, sponsors Scott.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this piece of legislation is at the request of both the Gardenville Baseball League and the Gardenville and Frankfurt Improvement Associations. Mr. Sears was someone who was near and dear to Radaki Park. He ran the Gardenville Baseball League for many years and passed away a few years ago, so they asked that we rename the park in his honor as it has been renovated for improved baseball fields.
Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0201, Waterfront Management District, Exemption from Supplemental Tax. For the purpose of allowing the waterfront management authority to exempt certain mixed-use properties from the supplemental tax, clarifying and conforming related provisions, and generally related to the waterfront management district, sponsors Cohen.
Chair recognizes, Chairman Cohen. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last year, we expanded the waterfront partnership, the bid Business Improvement District to include Falls Point. What this legislation would do is exempt residential property holders, because the purpose of the legislation is for businesses and commercial property holders to pay the tax. So this enables the waterfront partnership to exempt residential property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0202, Repel of Madison Park North Urban Renewal Area and Plan. For the purpose of repealing ordinance 63-1594 as amended by ordinances 67-962, 67-1042, 70-800, and 75-1061, and by minor amendments approved by the Board of Estimates on October 19th, 1966, January 17th, 1973, and February 28th, 1973, which established the Madison Park North Urban Renewal Area and Plan, and providing for a special effective date, sponsors Pinkett, Costello, Stokes.
This has been assigned to Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0203, Zoning Condition Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R7 zoning district, variances 301 East 28th Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on a property known as 301 East 28th Street, Block 3844, Lot 079, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area, and certain off-street parking regulations, sponsors Stokes.
This has been assigned to Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0204, Dangerous Knives Commercial Display to Minors. For the purpose of prohibiting the commercial display of certain dangerous knives to minors, conforming related provisions, and generally relating to the commercial display of dangerous knives, sponsors Middleton, President Young, Bullock, Pinkett, Burnett, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Snead, Clark, Reisinger, Costello.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fellow council members, if you look on your desk, you see this bright picture of what I'm just about ready to introduce, and as we all say, a picture speaks a thousand words. There was a citizen that was traveling through a section in my district at a gas station and basically notified me and was very disturbed of how these knives were positioned and just strategically positioned and placed in, you know, an area where you buy, in the picture it has Halls cough drops, candy, just things where minors stop in and pick up snacks or things as they're going to school or going about their travels. A few years ago, I had put in an ordinance where small businesses that carry snacks and so on, and that you notice that they put advertisement over all of the windows, completely sealed. We find that in distressed, impoverished neighborhoods, they do a lot of dealings, drug dealings, illegal activity within these areas. This is another piece of what goes on in impoverished areas, particularly African-American neighborhoods that are already going through certain crisis situations. So I added this as a piece on dangerous knives, and I thank my fellow colleagues for supporting this, and looking forward to a scheduled hearing in the Public Safety Committee as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0205, Baltimore City Commission for Women, Non-Voting Members. For the purpose of allowing the mayor to appoint members of the Baltimore City Council as additional non-voting members of the Baltimore City Commission for Women, conforming related provisions, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Commission for Women, sponsors Middleton, President Young, Bullock, Pinkett, Burnett, Costello, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Snead, Clark, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more of a technical ordinance, as we're moving forward with the Baltimore City Women's Commission. As the mayor stated in her address this afternoon, that over 100 women applied for this 19-member commission. We, this ordinance is helping the mayor to, I guess, make sure that council members are a part of that committee, and we're, you know, non-voting members, but we do have input that we like to continue to give and be a part of that committee. So this is just, again, a technical part, and I would like a hearing scheduled as soon as possible, so we can move forward with the commission.
This has been assigned to Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution introduced.
City Council Resolution 18-0072R, Supporting College Bound Expansion. For the purpose of calling on all stakeholders, including the city of Baltimore, the state of Maryland, Baltimore's business, and foundation communities and individuals to join together to support college education as a positive and achievable goal for a majority of our school systems, high school students and their families, by providing the 1.3 million required for college bounds expansion to 33 high schools in fiscal year 2019, and pledging the same amount each year for continuity through fiscal year 2022. Sponsors Clark, President Young, Bullock, Pinkett, Burnett, Costello, Middleton, Dorsey, Henry, Cohen, Stokes, Snead, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. 30 years ago, the Greater Baltimore Committee, then-mayor Kirk Schmoke, and the build organization came together to begin what is now a 30-year-old and very successful nonprofit organization called College Bound. In these 30 years, it has helped numerous Baltimore City public school students get themselves oriented, get their families oriented, get them prepared academically to go to college. The future of Baltimore depends, in large measure, on our own youth being trained, being educated, to take leadership roles throughout the city of Baltimore in the future, and that future is here. Only 18 of our schools have the College Bound program. We want to extend this resolution, ask that we extend to 33 of our Baltimore City public schools to have a full-time or a half-time College Bound counselor, half-time if it's a school of fewer than 300 students. It's gonna cost us $1.3 million a year, with a pledge to four years of contributions, for us to make this expansion. It's well worth it for the future of Baltimore City. So this resolution calls on all stakeholders, private sector, nonprofits, and of course, government, to come together to chip in, to make this College Bound a reality for our children and their families. So I hope that we will be having a hearing of the Education Youth Committee that will be announced. It's time for us to make good on the mayor's initiative of free tuition to Baltimore City Community College, Coppin State University's response to offer a full four-year degree program for those who complete Baltimore City Community College. So basically, we're on a roll. I expect other colleges and universities to help with the tuition and scholarships, and to create a real college town in Baltimore City, and thank you all for your cosponsorship and coming together to help us make this happen now.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just rise for a point of clarification, so that the public doesn't see that there's not only one council member that didn't co-sponsor this. As you guys know, I'm a board member of the College Bound Foundation and an alum of the program, so it would not be ethically feasible for me to support the resolution, although I do believe College Bound should be in every high school in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend appropriate rules to introduce the resolution to the floor.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All in favor of suspended rules, allow for the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 18-0073R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 18-0073R, Request for State Action, Require True Local Oversight of Private College Police Forces in Baltimore. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to amend SB-1241 and its companion bill, HB 1803, before passage, to require city council involvement in the creation of police forces for private colleges in Baltimore, and further requesting the governor not to sign these bills or similar legislation until the legislation includes checks and balances from all branches of Baltimore's government, sponsors Scott.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Please note that Council President Young is co-sponsor. Councilman Henry is co-sponsor. Z. Cohen, Dorsey, Middleton, Pinkett, all council members. Okay. Chair recognizes Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as we know, this item has been a hot-button item in the recent weeks about the opportunity for all the private universities in Baltimore, but most notably Johns Hopkins, to be able to create their own police force. This council, we're not saying that we don't think that they should have their own police force, but we already have one police force in Baltimore that no one really knows who controls and who oversees, that's seen overseen by the state, and this bill, in its current form, actually allows for the private universities in the city of Baltimore to create a police force for them, simply through a memorandum of understanding with the mayor and police commissioner, that does not include checks and balances of the city council, that does not include the fact that the police department itself is under a federal consent decree, so would those departments be under the same consent decree as well? That also puts a big burden on the police department that's having a tough time already to oversee itself, to be responsible for the actions of other officers. What we are simply asking, after speaking with the council president and others over the weekend, and hearing the voices of the citizens who spoke out against this issue, is that this legislation be truly changed to local enabling legislation that is done all the time in Annapolis, that requires that these things be created here at the local legislative level through a ordinance that would include community input throughout the city of Baltimore. And with that, Mr. President, I make a motion to immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All in favor, adopting Resurrection 18-0073R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, this resolution is adopted. I just wanted to let the council know that I did reach out to the Senate and the House and told them that I had issues with- and told them that I had issues with the bill, especially related to who's going to be responsible if anything happens with policing at a private university. The argument is that Coppin, University of Maryland, and those colleges have this bill, I mean have this police powers, but they're state entities, state institutions. This is a private institution that wants to create their own police department. Also asked them to make sure, the same thing that Councilman had in this resolution, same stuff that I asked them, to make sure that they amend this bill so that we won't be left accountable for something that a private institution, in case they get a police force, could cause problems for the citizens of Baltimore to pay out, you know, claims, and also that they be subject to our consent decree. So, and I did speak to the chairman because he called me and asked me about it, but when I first read it, I had some concerns, you know. I'm not pro or against, I just want to make sure that the city is not liable for a private entity. Thank you. You can find the consent counter in Section 8 at the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent counter. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is carried, this counter is approved. We now move the bills to second reader, Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18 Dash 0122 Michael Furbish, Member Sustainability Commission, District 10.
Chair recognizes Councilman, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing February 28th, 2018. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 18 Dash 0125 Anas Robb, Member Sustainability Commission, District 9.
Chair recognizes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18 Dash 0127 Benjamin DeBois, Member Board of Trustees for the Fire and Police Employees Retirement System, District 4.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18 Dash 0129 Charlotte James, Member Sustainability Commission, District 7.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18 Dash 0131 Wilbur E. Cunningham, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 14.
Chair recognizes Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed. Land Use and Transportation.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0143 Repeal of Ordinance 14-314 Remington Row Planned Unit Development For the Purpose of repealing ordinance 14-314 which designated certain properties as a business plan unit development known as Remington Row and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move this bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0151 Resoning 3310 Ridgewood Avenue.
Excuse me. Let's go back to 170143. Please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains. I got it.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0151 Resoning 3310 Ridgewood Avenue For the Purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3310 Ridgewood Avenue, Block 3193A, Lot 071 as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid, from the TOD 2 zoning district to the I-2 zoning district.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Vice, I mean.
This bill has amendments, so on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Reisinger.
Move the bill favorable, amended.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0158 Resoning 1770 and 1780 Union Avenue For the Purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 1770 Union Avenue, Block 3575C, Lot 068, and 1780 Union Avenue, Block 3575C, Lot 068C, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid, and from the I-2 zoning district to the IMU zoning district.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reisinger.
I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0142 City Property Grant of Easements For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Grant Three Perpetual Easements for Supporting Slopes Through the Property of the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, as shown on MTA drawing RW01 Contract Number 08561540, Maryland Transit Administration Retaining Wall Number CN 22475RW1NW, south of Cold Spring Lane, Mayor and City Council of Baltimore, property pled, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was, the sponsor of this bill was at the request of the Department of Transportation, and the committee heard the bill on March 8th, 2018. The easement will allow the Maryland Transit Administration to move forward with a $2 million federally funded project to build a retaining wall which would protect the light rail tracks, and the committee report is favorable. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0092 Morgan State University Approving Application for Designation as a Rise Zone, granting enhanced local property tax credit. For the purpose of approving the designation of the Morgan State University as a qualified institution under the state's Regional Institution Strategic Enterprise Zone, Rise Zone Program, approving and joining in the application for designation of a Rise Zone at 1500 Havenwood, Baltimore, Maryland, identified as 427, Section 080, Block 3969, Lots 001, 045, 045A, and 046. The property granting an enhanced local property tax credit for the property and providing for a special effective date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry.
Please note that Councilman Dorsey abstains.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0105 Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2428 Druid Hill Avenue. For the purpose preventing subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 2428 Druid Hill Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid, and granting variances from certain lot area per dwelling unit, gross floor area, and off-street parking requirements. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0117 Food Service Facilities, Polystyrene Foam Products For the Purpose of prohibiting food service facilities from using disposable food serviceware made from polystyrene foam, defining certain terms, imposing certain penalties, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the use of polystyrene foam products for food service purposes. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved, but I want to give Councilman Bullock a chance to say something if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of our colleagues. It's a very proud moment today to have this bill be supported unanimously by this body. We've recognized for quite some time the issue of styrofoam, not only the health impacts, but also the impacts on the environment, and so we look at us being leaders, not being followers. We know that there were attempts at the state level to do this, but we were lucky to be able to do this here at the local level. A lot of this really required compromise. I really appreciate the work of the environmental community, who really came out very strong on this issue. I also really appreciate us having some of the compromise of the business community because we want to make sure that this is not going to be something that is going to be overly injurious, and so having that 18-month phase-in period, we think is going to be appropriate. We're also happy to have the support of the mayor. We know that some other jurisdictions have done successfully. We believe we can also do this here in Baltimore. So again, I really thank you for the opportunity, and I think this is a great step for our city moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Bullock, for the job well done.
City Council Bill 1701, 17 Dash 0121 Resoning 300 Block of East 25 and 1/2 Street For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Properties Known as the 300 Block of East 25 and 1/2 Street, Block 3834, Lot 49, 300 East 25 and 1/2 Street, Lot 49A, Lot 49B, 320 East 25 and 1/2 Street, Lot 49C, Lot 50, Lot 50A, 342 East 25 and 1/2 Street, Lot 51, 344 East 25 and 1/2 Street, and Lot 52 NES Easement Rear of 342 East 25 and 1/2 Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid, and from the R8 zoning district to the IMU zoning district. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead.
This bill is approved. When we go back, she's in her seat now, let's say Clark.
Clark.
You're out of your seat. When we took the vote, you was out of your seat, so I had them to go back. I had them go back to make sure you was on that vote. Okay? No problem. Go ahead.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0150 Zoning Prohibiting Crude Oil Terminals For the Purpose of prohibiting new and expanded crude oil terminals throughout Baltimore City, defining a certain term and generally relating to crude oil terminals. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Please note that Costello is a no. This bill is approved. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thanks. I just want to thank all the people that, and all the advocates and the city people that worked so hard for a couple of years to, for this preventive public safety. It's, Ed, and Ed Reisinger and I, my colleague from the 10th District, and I got together and worked with the advocates in quite an amazing campaign because the letters that came in in favor of this, they weren't just foreign letters, they were wonderful letters from people all over the place and experts in the field, and this protects our community, I believe, from becoming a center for this kind of crude oil commerce. And although we can't control crude oil by rail, this is one way to say, hey, well, why don't you, like, if you're going to go someplace, why not go someplace else? And that protects us because these are very lethal when they blow. So thank you to everybody, the advocates, the environmentalists, and the people of Baltimore in the wonderful, wonderful, thoughtful letters and comments that came our way.
Thank you.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0152 Food Service Facilities, Healthy Beverages for Children's Meals For the Purpose of acquiring food service facilities that offer beverages as part of a children's meal to limit the beverage options being offered, defining children's meal, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to healthy food options for children. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
Chair recognizes Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleagues for the unanimous support. This bill is just the beginning. We know that so many young people in our city take too many sugary drinks, and this bill is just the start of how we can start to create a healthier life for them. We have to start to advertise and do a campaign about healthier drink options that are available to them. I look forward to working with all of my colleagues to doing that, but also about how we can get our young people more active. We know the great things that Recreation Parks is doing, but there's some other things that we could be doing, but I thank my colleagues for supporting this legislation. This is very important for the future of the young people in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0157 Zoning Condition to Use Banquet Hall First Floor Area of 333 West Onstad Street For the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the Establishment, Maintenance, and Operation of a Banquet Hall on the first-floor area of property known as 333 West Onstad Street, Block 0973, Lot 001, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0159 Sale of Property 1001 North Smallwood Street For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sell All Its Interest in Certain Property Known as 1001 North Smallwood Street, Block 0056A, Lot 017, and No Longer Needed for Public Use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0160 Sale of Property 2120 West Lafayette Avenue For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sell All Its Interest in Certain Property Known as 2120 West Lafayette Avenue, Block 0069, Lot 001, and No Longer Needed for Public Use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0161 Sale of Property 2201 Mosher Street For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sell All Its Interest in Certain Property Known as 2201 Mosher Street, Block 2344, Lot 022, and No Longer Needed for Public Use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0162 Sale of Property Blocks 6254D, Lot 021 For the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sell All Its Interest in a Certain Parcel of Now Land Known as Block 6254D, Lot 021, and No Longer Needed for Public Use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0170 City Officials Residency Requirements For the Purpose of Establishing Residency Requirements for Certain Agency Heads and at Will Supervisory Employees Providing a Certain Qualified Short-Term Exception Defining Certain Terms Providing for the Perspective Application of this Ordinance and Generally Relating to Residency Requirements as Limited by State Law for City Personnel. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Chair recognizes Chairman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my colleagues who supported this bill. This bill was not easy. It was not done overnight. We actually had to work with our delegate down in Annapolis to actually do some enabling legislation for us to be able to get this bill done here on a city level. We just want to say that it's only, this only affects 147 employees altogether. Forty-seven of those employees live in the city, so we're so happy to say that the majority of the people that are affected by this bill live in the city. It only leaves 45 positions open. This is a drop in the bucket. We have over 13,000 city employees that work for Baltimore City, and essentially, we are only talking about 147 altogether, and again, 45 of them are directly affected. So I just want to thank my colleagues for sticking by me to say that this matters. We want people to live here. We want everybody to live here. We want to collect all tax dollars to make everything better. So thank you all again. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0171 Five and Dime Historic District For the Purpose of Designating the Area Located Within Certain Boundaries as the Five and Dime Historic District. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17 Dash 0172 Howard Street Commercial Historic District For the Purpose of Designating the Area Located Within Certain Boundaries as the Howard Street Commercial District, Historic District. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. I wanted to speak to all four of the bills that we passed tonight that has been approved. When you work together and you sit down and you work out your compromises, this is what happened. We can all come together and get these bills passed. So I want to thank all of you who introduced the legislation for working with my office, for working with each other, to make sure that we come up with compromises where we can move the city forward. We all want the same thing. It's just how we get there and how we balance business interests versus our citizens, and at the end, our citizens must win because they're the ones to keep the businesses flourishing in our city. They're the ones to spend the dollars here, and I just want to just thank my council colleagues for all working together to get some significant legislation passed this year. So again, thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary, like to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion is encouraged, the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock, I mean Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March Twentieth, at ten AM in chambers on Bill Eighteen Dash Zero One Nine Five Pace Loan Program, a corrective bill, uh, at the request of Council President Young on behalf of the Department of Finance. Mr. President, I'd like to move, uh, to suspend rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing.
Second by, uh, Chairwoman, um, Sneed. All those in favors to, um, all those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most encouraged, Chair recognized Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March Twentieth, at ten oh five AM in chambers. This is Council Bill Eighteen Dash Zero Two Zero Five Baltimore City Commission for Women, Non-Voting Members at the request of Council Vice President Middleton. Uh, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a work session on Tuesday, March Twentieth, at ten ten AM on Council Bill Eighteen Dash Zero One Eight Five Non-Owner Occupied Dwelling Units, Rooming Houses, and Vacant Structures, Rental Dwellings, Registration and Licensing at the request of Councilman Henry. And finally, uh, the, uh, Judicial and Legislative Investigations Committee will reconvene a hearing on Tuesday, March Twenty Seventh, at ten AM in chambers on Council Bill Seventeen Dash Zero Zero Four Zero R Increased Transparency About Police Seized Property at the request of Councilman Stokes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, uh, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Department's Committee will hold a televised hearing on Wednesday, April the Fourth, beginning at T N, ten AM, to be a member of the Commission for Historical Architectural Preservation, and those names are Thomas Lebel, Elizabeth Nix, Anith Ranon, and Monica Rhodes. The same commission will have a executive appointments committee. That's what it said. I'm sorry, neither one of these are televised. So this is the same commission on Wednesday, April eleventh, beginning at T N, ten AM, Earn Bryant, James French, Matthew Moska, and Laura Penza. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognized, um, Chairman Rossinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to move for suspension of rules ten-dash-two.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
The rules are suspended. Chair recognized, uh, Chairman Rossinger.
Mr. President, Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen Dash Zero One Nine Four on April Twenty Fifth at one PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning conditional use parking lot located at Three Forty Seven through Three Fifty Seven North Coward Street, and Three Fifty Two and Three Sixty Davis Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen Dash Zero One Six Four on April Twenty Fifth at one oh five PM in the council chambers. This is zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two dwelling units in the R Eight Zoning District Variance is located at Twenty Two Forty East Baltimore Street. And the council will hold, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen Dash Zero One One Four on April Eleventh at one fifteen PM in the council chambers. This is zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two dwelling unit in the R Eight Zoning District Variance is located at Twenty Nine Thirty Eight Huntington Avenue.
Committee announcement, committee announcement. No committee announcement? Chair recognized, um, Chairman, uh, Cohen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just move to suspend rules ten-dash-two and ten-dash-three.
Second by Councilman, um, Chairman, um, Scott. All those in favor of suspending the rules to announce a hearing, say aye. All opposed, nay. Rules suspended. Chair recognized, um, Chairman, uh, Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, April Fifth, the Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on supporting college bound expansion on behalf of my colleague from the Fourteenth District. Um, having spent the better part of my career in a program that supported young people in their journey to college, this is critically important. Uh, we've got to make sure our young people have access to scholarship, have access to, uh, knowledge and understanding of how to get to and through college. So I thank my vice chairwoman for her work on this. Um, the hearing will be here in chambers at five PM.
Regular announcement. Chair recognized, um, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to just ask that Council Vice President Middleton honor a moment of silence for this forty-seven victims of homicides that we've lost in the city of Baltimore, and those that we have lost this year to the opioid crisis.
Thank you. Chair recognized, uh, Councilman Dorsey, then Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I haven't done much speaking here lately about art, arts events in Baltimore, um, but I do want to mention one, an exhibition opened this weekend, uh, or at the end of last week at the Baltimore Museum of Art of, uh, local artist named Stephen Towns. Um, a truly incredible, incredible exhibition, his first-ever museum exhibition, so I'm really thankful that, that he's getting it right here at home at the Baltimore Museum of Art, and the first-ever exhibition of his, uh, quilts that, um, look, uh, at history in Baltimore i- i- in, in America, uh, starting with his first quilt, uh, entitled "The Birth of a Nation," uh, up through the Nat, uh, and, and much of the Nat Turner Slave Rebellion, and other, um, uh, spiritual looks, uh, at history in, in the United States. So I, um, recommend everybody go up to the Baltimore Museum of Art to see Stephen Town's Rumination and a Reckoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognized, uh, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to announce my next fourth district-wide community meeting, which will be on Tuesday, April Third, at Guilford Elementary Middle School, uh, located at four eleven East Old Cold Spring Lane, which I have to wonder if there, do you actually need to have east on there if there is no west Old Cold Spring Lane? Yeah, all right. It's going to be at Guilford Elementary Middle. Plenty of parking. Doors open at six o'clock. Program starts at six thirty. We're going to be talking about the budget, and, uh, we'll have staff from the city's finance department to talk about the operating budget, and staff from the planning department to talk about the capital budget, and, um, if you come to that meeting and you have any further questions or concerns after it on, that, this is again, Tuesday, April Third, if you, uh, are unhappy with anything, uh, you will have the opportunity to come downtown the next night to the Board of Estimates Taxpayers Night, uh, at the War Memorial Building at six o'clock over here, um, right across from us, and the, uh, at which the Budget Bureau will be doing their full budget presentation, and I believe the draft budget is being released the previous week on Thursday, March Twenty Ninth. Does that sound right? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, Chair recognized, uh, Councilman Dorsey.
Uh, thank you. Sorry to, I forgot this. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Uh, the Baltimore Green Network Plan Public Meeting is March Fifteenth, uh, at six thirty PM at Mother Seton Academy on Greenmount Avenue, and as the Representation and Sustainability Commission, I appreciate you letting me announce that.
Okay. Um, Chair recognized, uh, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. On, uh, Sunday, March Twenty Fifth, will be the annual blessing of the city, which will be in the Eleventh District, right outside of City Hall, uh, at nine thirty AM, and that is led every year by St. James Episcopal Church, and also on, um, as the mayor mentioned earlier during her State of the City address, uh, on Friday, March Twenty Third, uh, Shake and Bake Facility, which is in the Eleventh District but in close proximity to, uh, Councilman Pickett in the Seventh and Councilman Bullock in the Ninth, um, will be reopening, uh, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to publicly thank Mayor Pew and the administration for all the work, uh, and effort that went into getting that facility reopened on time, and for the administration prioritizing it, and also thank you, Mr. President, for your support in those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognized Councilwoman Clark.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, um, special thanks to, uh, one and all for approving the, uh, dedication of the Harriet Tubman Grove in Wyman Park Dell. Um, and thank you, Mr. President, especially because not only did you attend and speak, but you, uh, made sure we all recognized so many of Harriet Tubman's relatives lived right here in Baltimore City and were there, and, uh, were re- and so, um, a representative of the family spoke toward the end of the ceremony, dedicating, uh, what was a Confederate monument where the Confederates rode out of town in the dark of night, and now this is the first of those four sites that is dedicated, um, to a, uh, outstanding member, um, of the human race and American community who spent most of her life in Maryland and has so many relatives in Baltimore City, that she, it did feel as if she wa- was feeling at home there, and I know she will. And we, the, the location, the site, is right at the corner of Howard and Art Museum Drive. Um, people gather there now, uh, with their children, or just to meet each other, or just to take a walk. It's a peaceful place, and it will remain that way. Sure, the, um, and we want to thank Wreckin' Parks for coming out the day before and clearing out so much of the limbs and broken, um, limbs and some broken trees that were around the grove, so it looked really nice. Thank you for that, and thank you to one and all in this council who made it possible. We feel very proud and, and pleased. It's a peaceful place, and it reflects the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before I go to Councilman Pickett, I wanted to welcome, um, DePaul back. I mean, he just had his little party. What was it? When was it, Larry? Friday? Thursday? And, and he's back to work already with, I think it's the Health Department? Okay. All right. You know what I told you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make an announcement that I think would probably be of great interest to you. Um, on Saturday, uh, March the Twenty Fourth, at Druid Hill Park, I've partnered with a group called Home Plate on our second annual free baseball clinic. Um, so we're asking, uh, young people from the age of seven to fourteen. Um, last year, there were over a hundred kids. This year, we're looking to do more than two hundred, but it's a free opportunity for kids to come out and learn baseball from, um, seven, I mean, I'm sorry, from nine in the morning to twelve. Um, it's just a great opportunity to give back to the kids. Thank you.
Chair recognized, the Vice President of City Council, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March Twenty Sixth, Twenty Eighteen. May we have a moment of silence for the families that continue to suffer from deaths of the opioid epidemic, and also the now forty-seven deaths of homicides in this city.
Thank you. There have been no further business. This concludes the twenty-ninth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.